Looking super tanned tonight, Jordan.
Do you have any issues?
No.
All right.
Which?
Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for June 30th, 2025. We'll start with roll call.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. LaBakla.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Scheikin.
Present.
Thank you. Also in attendance tonight, we have Mayor Steger, Mr. Peoples, Mr. Hare, Ms. Jackson, and Mr. Boggs. We'll move to items for discussion. Items for discussion this evening and pretty much the current sole topic is the Charter Review Commission recommended changes. Outlined in our packets this evening is sort of a breakdown of those revisions redlined, but then I think staff also, based on the Charter Review Commission's work, tried to chunk them into what we might consider small clustered revisions versus the more pointed topics of adjustments or changes that are being proposed. Mr. Peoples, do you have a particular place you'd like to start this evening?
If you want to, I think the best way to go through, get out, get the less significant ones out of the way. If there's any question on any of them, we can, we can go through those. They, some of them are grammar, some of them are, there was, or just basically removing sections that said intentionally admitted.
So on page 32 of tonight's agenda, it breaks down sort of a spreadsheet of the section, the title, the proposed changes, the change in the proposed language. If we want to go through that piece by piece, we certainly can. I guess I'll ask members of council whether in this sort of two or three pages of less significance, were there any things that we felt like we wanted to highlight before we just start going through line by line?
Not for me.
I mean, all that was pretty straightforward.
Do we need to go line by line then?
I don't, I mean, I study. I don't know if everybody studied.
Yeah.
A veteran, yeah.
I might have some that aren't necessarily even outlined, but yeah, I'm not seeing any of the less significant updates. So maybe we just move to page 36 of the agenda, changes of higher significance. And we have section 3.07, salaries of elected officials. We want to remove the reference to the mayor's salary, reword this section to apply OPR's minimum model of compensation. And so we will see, see the red line for the exact language, but it says each council member shall be compensated at the rate equivalent to qualify for one full month contributing service to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System. On the effective date of any increase in the statutory requirement, president of council shall receive 10% more and vice president shall receive 5% more to provide for additional responsibilities of his or her position. Any discussion on this topic from members of council?
I personally like the fact that it is one year of OPR's. I mean, for retirement's sake, I think it's, that's lovely. It makes it easy as far as calculating your salaries.
No, it does.
Identified by OPR's.
Well, and the part about this is it's indexed, but I think it also puts it in the member, in the hands of the residents to decide council salary instead of us deciding it for ourselves, which I think has always been the problem with councils sort of having to set its own pay. There's sort of this dynamic of like, you know.
Everybody wants to do it.
Nobody wants to really, you know.
And additionally, additionally, Mr. Boggs, please jump in here. Ethics Commission, you can't set your own, so it would always, if you said anything, it would always be term and term. And so it would be, three would be making one rate, four would be making another rate theoretically. So this sets it to where it's all standard. PERS hasn't indexed out till, or calculated out till 2029 at 1.75% per year increase in that rate. So council has not had a, has not given themselves a raise since 2014. So I think the nominal amount per month that it is that it will increase, and then those, again, less, probably less than cost of living type of raises are pretty easy to handle.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Peoples. I think the thing that, yeah, is good to highlight there is that if council were to start to act on salary updates, we would potentially never be on the same pay schedule. That we would always have a difference in council salaries, given the cycles and how it works. So this is probably the cleanest way for us to sort of all also be in unison.
Because there will, there will only be a difference if this is adopted just for the next two years.
Uh, I believe.
No, there'll be no difference.
Sorry, Mr. Boggs?
Right. If this is adopted, it would apply uniformly to everybody starting January 1st.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. I was thinking that.
That was the legislation under current language. Things moving out. I think that was more of the discussion of like, if we set it ourselves, that's when the timing had to start.
Got it.
Okay.
Sorry.
So.
So it sounded like nobody's really opposed to it.
Okay. The next item is the vacancy, temporary absence, or disability. Replace suggested language from FBT.
Frost Brown talk.
Thank you. See final red line for exact language. And actually, I think I did have a question on 5.03, section B 2. Now I gotta find what page that's on, though.
That is, still 18?
Five.
17?
17.
16 and 17.
Yep, 2.
Or the temporary absence.
Wait.
I have a question, Mr. Boggs.
Yeah.
What is a temporary absence in this instance?
So that would be anything that is not covered under the permanent absences, death, resignation, failing to, you know, moving out of town, failing to meet the qualifications of office, recall or otherwise a permanent removal from office. So if there was a health event that was for a finite period that kept the mayor from performing the mayoral functions, if it was an absence where, you know, somebody's on a cruise or something and isn't able to be reached in a reliable manner, then an acting mayor could be appointed during that temporary availability.
Do they need to be appointed?
They need to be called.
What is, I guess, what's that succession? Like, how is the?
That, I guess they wouldn't need to be appointed because under the terms of this, self-executing, the president of council would become the acting mayor.
So I guess my question to that was, when it comes to a temporary absence, in past years, we had a mayor who was in the hospital, indisposed, and council was never notified that this person wasn't, thank you, wasn't able to do it, wasn't in the office, was not actively serving the community, and there was no interim. I think we had like three days that there was an interim, but the rest of it, it was status quo. So, I mean, in my mind, that would have been a moment where we said that's a temporary absence and would have said council president should be. So I guess I strung with the not defining temporary absence because in that case, I feel like the decision was made without council to continue status quo.
So I think the argument would be is that when is, how do you define incapacitated or unable? Because I know, I know that, I think there was still, there was still work being done from sort of the hospital of what you're talking about, that event. There was still work being done, and he wasn't fully removed and still staying up on, you know, things as they were happening. So it is, there is this gray area still surrounding this. And I don't know that it'll ever be black and white because I think, I think what Mr. Boggs likes are shades of gray.
Of course he does. That's billable hours for him.
Because, you know, it, well, I mean, and I don't mean that to be anything other but to say, to define it makes it harder sometimes when there are these moments that are sort of like, how do you define, you know, out, like, not in the city? So if the mayor's in the hospital in Columbus, is he technically out of the city?
Well, but then there's other stuff.
It's just like, you know.
If the mayor's in the hospital, he should be attending, you know, worrying about his health, his her health.
Can I, if I could interrupt real quick? I think we actually, as a council, solved that problem when we authorized the creation and funding of the city administrator. Because at that time, we did not have a city administrator in the instance you're talking about, but we do now, which I think is, that's one of the reasons we did it, was to have the continuity of operations at a top level in the city in case there was an issue with the mayor. So I don't know that.
And maybe we have resolved it, because yes, you're correct. We've put in the city administrator who we love. Thank you, Matt. But I guess I just want to make sure we also close that gap because, no, we like that all the time. You know when we don't agree with that, we still like that. I just want to make sure we've closed the gap because again, there was a period of time when we knew that, Amanda, we're kind of running the show and keeping the vote sink, like, from sinking. So it was just, that's my only concern.
The one line, and so the reason I went to sort of item number two, and I guess it's section A, not section B, I typed that incorrectly in my notes, was that the city administrator shall be responsible for the mayor's administrative functions in his or her current duties.
In addition to his or her current duties?
In addition to his or her current duties. So I, I guess my question is, why did we need to add that definition for, so like, we're specifically stating that the temporary responsibility is only the judicial branch and the, and the, and the coordination with the city administrator, which there may or may not be, because that's at the mayor's discretion. It's not a, it's not a, you know, it's not a classified role. Did I say that right?
Actually, I'm not.
I mean.
Temporary mayor cannot remove a city administrator needs to be.
No, 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 I know that. No, no, I'm just saying, like, I guess I'm asking why we're saying in here, when the mayor's out of town, the appointee, who I guess is council president, is the oversight over the judicial branch and only responsible for consulting with the city administrator?
I read it says oversees the city administrator.
Correct.
Which in my mind is, they're in charge of the city administrator now.
And I took it, I think, I think I was okay with this because to me.
Which is why you're acting as behalf of the mayor.
Well, I think, yeah, you're acting, but I think for me, the city administrator's going to continue because in our charter, it states that the mayor and the city administrator can literally transfer jobs back and forth. So the city administrator's going to continue doing the daily activities and you're going to do oversight. They don't necessarily want you coming in making decisions.
I get it. It's not about the person.
Just you.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand why that's there. That's my question.
Because the way that it's set up, the mayor has duties that are laid out in the charter that they can be delegated to the city administrator, but not every mayor is going to necessarily delegate every administrative function to a city administrator. So there may be mayors who hold on to certain, you know, they want to see purchase orders above a certain amount, or they want to see, you know, maybe they're looking at department heads vacation requests, those sorts of things. So the idea is to make sure that if a mayor has held on to some day-to-day administrative functions in making that arrangement with the city administrator, if that mayor is either permanently absent and you have an acting mayor for a period of time, or just temporarily absent, that those administrative duties don't fall through the cracks.
Thank you. That's the clarity. I was just trying to understand the point of the inclusion. That helps. Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
That is, that language is both in A and B.
Right.
Oh, okay. So, so thanks, Matt. I was right. I think that's what you're saying.
No, I don't think so. So does anybody, it doesn't sound like we have anybody opposed to this language. Is that correct? Okay.
So I think the first two items then are.
We're good with those?
We're good with both. Okay.
FBT.
FBT, yep. Shorthand.
Friends with big trucks.
5.06 Administrator, subject to confirmation by the majority of council. So this is, I think, something we've sort of discussed, sort of maybe at points ad nauseam, about how do we, or do we not have any role to play in the appointment of a city administrator?
I don't think that's what we spoke about ad nauseam.
Oh, we did.
I feel like we spoke more about, we want to have the ability to have input on the removal.
It's that too. It's both, it's the similar sides of the same point.
Charter commission is the one who suggested the language that's in there. So that's what is being presented. I know there was quite a few, quite a bit of discussion surrounding that.
Whether we should be consulted on both ends, just the first end, no end, because ultimately, if the mayor and the city administrator aren't getting along, do we want to make, do we want to make it a toxic workplace by saying, well, you can't get rid of them, you got to figure it out?
No.
Right, exactly. No, no, I know. But then, by the same point, then, if they want to remove them.
To hire their best friend.
To hire someone, are we then also going to block it and become imped, like, are we also going to be an impediment on the opposite end? Being punitive and punishing for potentially removing someone who, again, we say the person doesn't matter, but maybe we're biased. We really like Matt.
I think it's important for the front end, at least, that we're involved. I mean, it provides some checks and balances. Because again, you said it's not about the person, but you don't know an elected official comes in and, you know, hoodwinks us or something like that. So, yeah, I think, I think having, the majority of the council protects the city. Yeah.
I agree. I'm, I'm on board with being involved in the onboard, or the approval process of bringing someone onboard, but that's where it would stop, in my opinion.
Do you think that the position of the administrator or the directors should be contracted employees? And we've, I've talked offline a little bit about, so what, what would that give you? And it would give those associates the benefit of a severance. So let's say that you did get a mayor and the administrator was let go without cause and, like, there's the door, leave. So there's no severance paid for that individual. So it's just, I'll just throw that out there for discussion.
So in my opinion, no. But, could be wrong on this, but the reason why I think so is I think a lot of times we're thinking about the people that are at the table right now. But if Matt decides to retire tomorrow, and we interview, and Joe brings on a new person, we approve it, everybody in this room who's ever managed people has made a bad hire at one point or another in their career. So Joe makes a bad hire, we approve a bad hire, why do we owe that person a severance? So we have to look at it more in a macro instead of just this, these people sitting at the table right now.
Well, I understand that you had to take the person away from the discussion.
I'm sorry.
And the thing about the severance is the expectation that someone pointed out is that they were brought in with the expectation that there is no severance should they be let go. So they didn't expect it at the time of hire, if it's not, if it's not a clause in a contract.
That's what I was going to say. I think a lot, especially in this profession, in, you know, at the level they are, I think a lot of them come in with clauses and contractual negotiations that happen prior to hiring.
Mr. Boggs, as a government employee, do we have the ability to sign a contract for these employees? I'm not familiar with that in those positions.
So, yeah, I mean, it could be done. And as a municipality, with the home rule powers, you have more ability to do that than with, you know, statutory, like a township or county type of government that has a little more restrictions on how to handle those issues.
Right, thanks. So I think one of the discussions that we were sort of having around this too was if the mayor elected to say, you know, let's say Mayor Steger decided, you know what, Matt's a, Matt's a great civil servant, I, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, if my time here comes to an end, you know, before he leaves office, maybe he decides he doesn't want to run again, he offers Matt, you know, a contract to make sure that the, you know, the next person who comes in, if they remove Matt, Matt's, you know, protected against that, right? So let's, let's say that's something, does council need to approve any of that contract language since it's an HR-type scenario? Or would we only really sort of understand or find out about it at the execution of the payout?
Depends on the dollar, Matt.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, you would have, essentially, it would be a matter of what the appropriation is. Are there funds appropriated to follow through with that contract?
Would it require appropriation?
All expenditure money requires appropriation, so yes.
But money is fungible.
Well, but that's not a budgeted item, so it would definitely require more. And just for the record, let's stop talking about Matt because I feel that's more, he's technically eligible for retirement at any point in time, so we need to not let him go.
I understand it's all theoretical. So, I mean, it has to be part of the discussion. I don't, I don't take it personally by any means.
All right. So I guess on the, and just to bring it back, on the topic of city administrative confirmation, it sounds like the majority of council feels like they would like to send this item to residents for approval.
Yes.
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 Okay. Any, any other notes on that from staff?
I'm, personally, I don't, I don't feel it is appropriate because of separation of powers. I understand the checks and balances type of thing, but that's also on the budget side as well. So just, just my opinion.
I see both sides, so.
Yeah.
I second that opinion.
Do you second Matt's opinion or our?
I second Matt's opinion. Executive side versus legislative side, especially in a mayor's strong legal format.
And unfortunately, this came from, this wasn't like council-generated idea, right? It came out of Charter Commission, and, and we had a pretty diverse group of Charter Commission members this year. You know, I don't see anything wrong with approval with a simple majority. I don't see that as a impingement or getting into your lane over there. I mean, you know, I remember when I asked Mr. Boggs, well, what happens if we get a city administrator we don't like him? And he goes, oh, you just defund him. And I was like, oh, okay. So we, as council, we still have the power. If we have a city administrator we don't like, we can simply move to strip it from the budget, and with a majority vote, remove the funding for it immediately. That's correct, Mr. Boggs, isn't it?
Right. I mean, ultimately, all of those things are subject to council appropriation. So that's, that's a big hammer to wield, but that's the hammer that you would have in that circumstance.
Yeah. But if we defund it, but it's, it's just the person that's sitting in the position that we're objecting to, it's not the position. We still want it to exist. If we defund it, then we gotta wait a whole nother year to bring it back into the budget?
Oh, no, we can, we can add, subtract from the budget at every meeting. Like, it's a working document.
Probably not.
Not going to. Sorry, Amanda.
I mean, you can.
Amanda just, Amanda just threw up. I thought she was on camera.
Not going to, just.
I understand your point, and I see what you're saying about this. I still think since this came from the committee that we should put this to our residents and let them decide.
Okay. If that's your point of view, you can't change that point of view later.
Sure I can.
On another item. You gotta be consistent with that point of view.
That's right. Wait a minute, I heard.
If you're gonna be consistent with that point of view, like, it comes from the Charter Review Commission, so it's rubber stamp?
No, we're retracting that.
I'm just, I'm just asking. You're already on the record.
I would like to add that I think you guys should consider the contracts more. Most municipalities, correct me if I'm wrong, Thad, do that, have contracts for their, for their directors at least. And I'm a firm believer in that, in us organizing that and putting it together.
Especially now that you guys all know that you can add and subtract anything and add at whim.
Well, on the whim. We could approve the contract, I guess, but why, we wouldn't put that in the charter, would we?
So I'm going to use one of my favorite corporate terms. Let's put a pin in that, come back to it. And let's just keep it focused on the chart, because since it's not going into the charter.
No.
I'd rather stay.
I just want to make sure we remember all that.
But I think we definitely come back to figuring out the contract discussion, maybe at a work session meeting or even at the end of a city council meeting, as time allows.
And I, I wasn't stating that the contracts would go into the charter, just that it's a tool that we can use to keep a mayor in check. There's, there's, there's something you have to answer to. There's, there's, there's something you have to answer to, you know, there's a, there's a.
There's a cost of it.
There's a cost, there's a cost to just firing people at will.
Consequently.
And it can be a retention and recruitment tool as well.
Yeah.
And I think it should be situational, but let's put a pin in it.
Agreed, situation. Okay. So we've heard from staff. Staff's opinion was slightly askew from councils. Did that discussion, or the majority of council, just by straw poll, still aligned with sending the council confirmation of the city manager to the voting public?
I'm a yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
We trust that the Charter Commission, who also represents the citizens of Kenilwinstor, that they did their job and they had a good discussion, and I trust their work.
Okay. All right, so. So far, we're, everything's going to the public, let's move to mayor's salary. So mayor's salary is new, this is 5.07. Provide a range for council to set the base salary.
Is this the one you already want me to say, hang on?
I'm guessing it was the one. I, no, I, any of them, I mean, if you don't, you can't just, you can't just willy-nilly, you know, I agree, I don't agree. You were all in.
Can I ask a quick question for clarity? So when we talk about moving these to, you know, into the hands of the residents to vote on it for election, I mean.
Vote.
Yeah, for vote. Are these individual items that are going to be voted on, or are they all lumped together?
Let's come back to how we want to cluster them up.
What, we get to choose?
You get, you get to choose.
They can be five or six individual items, or they can be clumped together, or they can be three and two.
Staff has perspective on that, too.
Okay.
So, but let's, let's come back to the.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put a pin in that, too, thanks, Matt. Circle back. We'll actually circle back to that, we're not gonna put a pin. Salary of the mayor, so the recommendation from the Charter Review Commission was 60 to 85 as a base salary, which would be ingrained in the charter, at least for the minimum of the next five years. The way it's written now, it, and Mr. Boggs, maybe you can help me with this. The way it's written now, it, it doesn't take effect in the same vein that councils would have the opportunity to take effect. Like, at the beginning of the following term, like, it, it almost says, like, he has to wait till the next term before an adjustment, but we can pay, we get it right away. That feels like there should be some way to set that, so if we, if we put to the voter at the floor 60,000, then January 1, the minimum his salary could be, would be 60,000, even if we took no action.
But we would have to vote on it before.
Well, right, council would have to vote to put it forward to the ballot.
The ballot.
But that is not a decision that is, like, the mayor does not have veto authority on putting charter amendments to the ballot. It's all about, it's all determined by the constitution that it's the two-thirds vote of the legislative authority that does that. And so that could go forward, be placed on the ballot, and from a, from a legal and from an ethics law standpoint, if the voters choose to make that decision, it could go into effect without running afoul of the ethics law. Because, you know, in that instance, the mayor is not taking any action that affects his own salary.
So if we set the floor 60,000, January 1, the minimum his salary could be, would be 60,000, and we take no action?
Right, you could make it self-executing like the, like the council one, and then come back to it or set a COLA over time and have that be self-executing.
Can I throw something out here? I don't like, I like the idea of raising the mayor's salary. I don't like how this is written with a range, because it's going to require council action every term to set a salary for the mayor. And I think that leads to a little bit too much of unpredictability. And what I would propose is instead is, we talked about this earlier, but make the mayor a multiple of that PERS number that you're, we're proposing that you index council to. And that way, it's, it's a number, it's tied to that index, and maybe it's a multiple of seven, a multiple of eight, a multiple of six, whatever it is, like, I mean, we looked at it, and I just think that's cleaner, and then it, and the other thing is, is we can make it take effect January 1, if the voters approve it, January 2026, and, you know.
I thought, I didn't think the vote was every year, I thought it was every four years. So we would establish one, and then whoever ran got that salary, and then, before the next election, you would do it again.
Yes, yeah, that's how I read it.
That's how I read it.
Yeah, but that's what he's saying is not consistent, so. What Patrick's arguing is for consistency, which is odd, he would set it.
Been on vacation for a while, man.
I know, sorry.
I'm like, I'm in a good mood.
I think the range gives, I think the range gives you the ability, if there's a new mayor in four years, you can bring it back down to the 60,000 and work them back up, according to their.
But you won't know if there's a new mayor.
But you're gonna pass this, but you're gonna have to pass this before your mayor's elected.
Correct. You will never know, you'll, yeah, you'll never, you can't reset a new mayor's salary. The mayor's salary will be determined before.
Before they run.
Actual vote.
Election.
Election, thank you. So you'll never have the opportunity to know, like, if the public decides they want a fresh perspective.
Okay, I got you.
That's, that's the hard part of this, and so.
So are you saying at the start of the new mayor's term, if the salary is at, currently at 75, that's where they start?
That's where they stay.
So why would we not restart them at 60?
You can't.
You can't.
You have to define it before the term starts.
When they run, they have to know who's, they have to know what their salary is prior to.
Because we can't set it after the election has been.
You can't adjust this in, in the term, within the term.
We can't say, we're not person, so if somebody would like, we're gonna take both now at 60.
Hold on, so, Mr. Boggs, are we saying then we could set the salary after the election? Before the term is started?
Not the way that this is.
By ethics law, I'm asking.
By ethics law, yes, council. Council could, well, it depends on whether you have an incumbent mayor who has been reelected or not. Because then you'd have that legislative activity going on. And in fact, as, one of the things that came to mind, albeit after the commission acted on this recommendation, was it, it talks about it being in October of each year, by which point you would have candidates who have filed, and they would have to be filing sort of sight unseen with what that rate would be. So if, if council is inclined toward this language or a version of it, you might even want to move that activity up to pre-filing. So that if somebody's pulling petitions to run for mayor, they know, okay, for the next term, it's going to be X dollars, this is what I'm getting myself into.
What if we build it?
I do like that idea.
At tier.
That's what I was gonna say, pay raise, like, every, every single, so like, first year, 60, second year, 65, blah, blah, blah. And then year five is consistent with year four, if we continue to get, you know, the mayor reelected. Does that make sense? You cap out at four and then just.
And I was thinking 60 for the first term, 70 if you made a second term, 80 for a third term.
I was thinking years, not.
Well, that's, it's gonna get looked at every five years, so you're, you're making rules for 20 years in the future on something that could be changed in five years, I don't.
But also may not be.
That, may not be, but also, what, $85,000 or $70,000 is today is not what it was five years ago. So, I, we're getting a little too far ahead of ourselves on that.
Okay. Maybe a quick straw poll on salary ranges versus indexing mayor's salary. So those who like the concept of an index? Four.
Sorry.
Five, okay, well, thanks for being late. Sort of. Thoughts, Steve?
I like the range, but I also like it starting, not in 27, but like ours.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I kind of like the idea of it always being constant, without us having to sort of, you know, I think as we've heard, like, taking the person out of the, out of the, out of the seat and just making it about the seat. Like, what do we really think the mayor's salary should be in a strong mayor form of government? You know, do we think it should be, what's that, you know, I mean, obviously, we've been given a range.
I think that we, and I was part of it, but we as a body made a mistake, I mean, or we learned, right? Reducing the mayor's salary that low, like, we thought that the administrator was gonna do a lot of the work, and we're seeing that that's not the reality, at least that's my opinion. Like, there is still a lot of work there for the mayor, and they are still in charge, and they are still top dog. And I think we need to, we certainly need to reexamine where that mayor's salary is at, because in hindsight, it's not been fair to the current mayor.
Absolutely. Well, and I think there's some, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and I think in retrospect, you know, it's.
Hindsight's 2020.
Hindsight's 2020, it's, it's easier. Every new individual will bring something different to that role, right? And maybe the way it was going to be defined under a previous administration is not necessarily the way it would be defined under this administration or the next administration, so it is.
I mean, I'm still, I still hope for, maybe we went too low, but I'm not opposed to the fact that we did the reduction. I still feel like, although this term, we got an incredibly good mayor who is, has delved in and that he is full throttle when he's in the trenches, that may not be the case. I mean, our, literally, our charter says you can work five minutes, you can work 85 hours a week. It's just the same thing.
But you don't, you don't run, you don't go through all that effort to, to put in five minutes. No, you can't, you can't, you, you, I don't know, I don't.
Pretty good trickery if he does, or they do.
You're right, and then, but that's four years, I mean, if something happens.
You've got to convince a lot of people that you're in it.
Well, so we say it all the time on politicians.
I don't say it all, I mean, not at this level. I'm not saying, that's what I'm saying, this is, this is not.
But we still have to make this position attractive.
Yes, yeah, we have to attract people to want to be the mayor of Kenilwinstor.
So far, we've not had a race that was uncontested in a long time.
Correct.
People like some of us.
Were you waving? I didn't know if you were. Council?
I'll take it.
Yeah, fire my mic. Please. We need a mic.
Sorry.
We're not set up for public input, sorry.
Where it's at?
Commission member input.
You don't have any prepared public remarks?
It's like, let's make a deal.
Give me old Bobby.
I was just gonna say, the idea of indexing didn't come up. I think if it did, it would probably, I would guess it would get some backing. And doing seven or eight times that base would put you in that range. And it would get you your COLA as well, and you wouldn't necessarily, well, the increase would go up on that base.
Right.
Every year.
The retirement.
And would keep you in that range.
Yeah.
And that, but that range may have, I would keep the rage out of it completely, and just keep it at that. Personally, and I, I don't know if you have anything on it.
Well, I'll just add that we, we all basically centered our conversations around the same things y'all are talking about. And we did, we spent two weeks mulling over salary ranges, and everybody came, came back with their own, and you know, we did, we have a few outliers on both ends, but we had, it was pretty easily seen once we got everybody's floors and ceilings that, you know, this was a pretty obvious median.
Yeah.
Where everybody felt content. Like Adam said, we didn't consider the indexing. I mean, for me, it's, it's a little bit apples and oranges comparing council salaries to mayor salaries. And so I hear what you're saying about wanting the consistency, but I also kind of see it as being two separate things. Just me.
Thank you, Mr. Kerschner, Mr. Milliken?
Along those lines for the indexing, now, this is base salary only, doesn't include the, the PERS pickup or the mileage. If it's seven times council's proposed salary based on index to PERS, seven times is 62,740. Eighty-two, eight times is 71,703. Nine times is 80,666. So all, all three of those, and then you're, you're gonna fall, either side of that, you're gonna fall outside that range that was set, or that was proposed.
So can we not say that it's just seven percent of times?
We could say it's, yeah.
Seven times, eight times, nine times, whichever one, we all kind of land with the range.
Use, use the range as a guide, don't put it in the, in the charter, proposed charter, and use it as a guide from 11 independent members of the community.
If you use the same language from council, salary shall be seven percent higher than the.
Not seven percent.
Seven times.
Seven times the council, council's.
That's council's base, not the vice president or vice president.
But must meet minimum of the PERS.
It would be seven times the PERS minimum.
Right, yeah, he, yeah, it would meet the, the PERS minimum. I think it's just a question of what multiple you would want to pick to, you know, fairly compensate and attract, you know, active mayoral candidates, you know, because.
I mean, eight potentially, so eight potentially makes sense, because it's right in the middle of the range, pretty.
Close to the middle.
Is that the one, the 71?
Right, or did you say eight, eight's in the middle of the range?
Eight's in the middle of the.
Eight, 71, 7.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What was nine then?
8666.
Which is actually over the.
Which is over, so seven keeps it not at the floor, not at the ceiling, it's sort of the sweet spot. You could also say that, you know, from a rationale standpoint, he's sort of the eighth elected official.
He's the eighth wonder of the world.
Eighth wonder of the world, we could find all kinds of crazy eights.
Crazy eights, nice.
Yo, Joe, see you.
I'm ready to get him a shirt, crazy eights.
That's eight.
So, since the charter put through this one, and we're thinking of doing seven percent, or seven times, thank you.
Eight times.
Eight.
Eight.
It's what I said, but it could be seven.
You said seven doesn't get us the bottom, and it doesn't get us the top.
Seven gets you to 61.
62, 7.
62, 7.
Tell me what eight does again, Matt.
71, 7.
Eight is to the middle.
Eight's 71.
Eight's the middle.
Yeah.
I'd even go seven and a half.
I'd just go eight.
I mean, I like seven and a half.
Or we could just go eight.
Yeah. Eight.
It's easier to type.
Do we have to let, what the Charter Committee put on the ballot, are we asking them to go on one or the other?
No.
So we're gonna, if we change it, we can change the language.
Correct.
From the Charter Commission, listening to what we're saying about the seven times.
Eight.
Eight times.
She moved off a percent, so we almost got her there.
Can't let her go from time.
They've already commented on that.
Yeah.
Adam said it makes sense. Chuck said it's apples to oranges, as far as the mayor's salary, but he wasn't upset, either way. Correct? Did I just put words in your mouth, Chuck?
No, you're absolutely right, and I think it's kind of, if I'm hearing you all correctly, to me, it, it sounds like six to one, half a dozen of the others. It's like, you're just, you're phrasing the same number differently.
We're just not making it, we're just taking the range out, putting, putting the salary in the middle of the range provided.
But we're also taking it out of council's hands to establish that. You're saying, we're going to use this number times this, and that's gonna be it.
And it'll be one in a 1.75 percent raise every year, index the same as city council through 2029.
I like it.
Okay.
And, if I'm not mistaken, O-Pers can revise those at any time, can't they?
Yes.
They will revise them for 30 and beyond, they just haven't, the guidance document that they have.
Oh, so those are locked in.
Those are locked, they're all locked in, it's 1.75, we can, we could calculate out what it is at. If you want to know what 2029.
You don't need to do it, no, it's all right, I just.
Okay, we all got our COLA reports. Okay, we all got our COLA reports.
I like this method because it doesn't seem quite, quite as arbitrary. And there's a, if you will, a checks and balance with PERS that doesn't get exorbitant or is, doesn't fall below what would be customary. So I like the methodology behind this.
Well, then I, I'm just gonna throw one point out there. Once we put this in the charter though, it's there for five years and it takes another vote to bring it out of the charter. Do we want to, do we want to do that? Because that's what we're doing. We're, we're handing it off and we're tying it to. I'm okay with it, but I just want us all to be aware of it, that the council has historically set the salary of, of itself in the mayor.
The residents will be the one to tell you if it's right or wrong.
You're right. Thank you.
But I also think we as council, every single time, spend hours and hours and hours debating the mayor's salary. If we haven't established usage, then it's, it's a no.
We have a methodology that we're not necessarily in control of.
Right.
We've let the residents set the mayor's salary, basically, just the same as we've let them set council's salary. And it's a, it, to your point, it is something we'd be conceding. And the question is, you know, are we all okay conceding that sort of?
I think it's a good thing.
Power.
Sounds like.
I do too. I mean, I'm.
I think we have a good base to start off. 71,000?
700.
It'd be, so.
And eight?
Eight times the earnable.
With the language saying that it goes into effect January 1, 2026.
Okay.
In 29, it'll be like 75 something. So it's not.
Yeah.
Not huge, a huge chunk.
It's not like real inflation.
But it would also, I mean, from a, I mean, from a recruitment and candidate standpoint, it's, it's good to know what you're walking into every year to, and sort of have that sort of establishment. So.
Well, it's good to know that it's also fluctuating with today's.
Yeah. Okay. So a quick straw poll, just to make sure we're all okay. Eight times council's salary. Um, it would also begin 20, uh, 26. I forget what year we are in. It's 2025, next year's 26.
Hard to believe, but yeah.
All right. So.
I'm good.
Everyone?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. That matter seems to be settled.
Mr. Benham, I'm sorry, before you move on, can I, may I just ask a clarifying question for?
So that eliminates the, uh, the October quote unquote deadline we had. So, okay. That's all. Thank you.
And charter members, we do appreciate your work and effort on all these items. So really appreciate.
Feedback. Well, I mean, their range really helped provide us with the opportunity to sort of, really kind of.
Do some planning in there.
Yeah. Um, so the last item on the sort of list of changes of higher significant is the adding a member of council to the chair of planning and zoning. Now, we save the best for last. I think this is gonna, maybe I'm wrong. Um, require some discussion from members of the council.
Can we do a straw poll real quick and see where everybody's at?
Do we, let's just do that first. How does, how, whoa?
I just wanted, can I ask a question real quick?
I mean, okay.
Mr. Boggs, ethically, just having, because we've always said planning and zoning, we've tried to keep ourselves very separate so that we are not always hearing things ahead of time. Ethically, I feel like there's that battery. We're not supposed to be engaged in the whole conversation of planning and zoning. I know we're not voting members, how this is written. And we all have conversations with planning and zoning members and things like that, but not to the whole effect of us actually being intertwined and all that. Is there an ethics concern with having somebody on city council hearing?
Because, could I, as a city council member, have undue influence on other members?
Right.
How could you not anyways if you wanted to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can.
I could say something to the effect of city council would never approve that as a sort of an offhand comment.
So we don't have Patrick on there.
Definitely not.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Boggs.
Our second thing.
Sorry.
I, I don't know that I would characterize it as an ethics question necessarily. You know, as you recall, you'll, you have two types of zoning applications that come forward. You have the, the things that fall into a legislative bucket, like a rezoning, adoption of a development plan. And so, um, council ultimately is making the decision on those regardless. The other bucket you have are your conditional uses, your variances, things that under the current system are appealed from Planning and Zoning Commission to council. And so you could, you could potentially have an argument in the latter case that somebody who has sat and voted in the event of breaking a tie, that if they've sat and voted at the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they should not be rehearing the case on appeal. How, how strong is that argument? I, I don't know. I mean, if you're hearing an appeal, you're seeing the record that's created on Planning and Zoning Commission anyway, and it's being, you're having a new hearing up here. You know, I've seen this done in other communities, Dublin being one where their charter allows council to appoint somebody who is a seated member of council, but does not require it. And they have gone away from that practice, as a matter of fact, in the last five, four or five years. I can't remember if it was pre-COVID or coming out of COVID. And part of the rationale for that was, was they, they were concerned that not only other commissioners, but also applicants in the public would hear the council member speak at Planning and Zoning Commission and think, ah, the die's been cast and that's the only voice I need to listen to. And so that's why they've gone away from it, even though they had the ability to do it.
So I have a follow-up question to that. You said the chair could potentially be a tiebreaker and that they would not vote if they were on council. What if there's a potential property where we need to have a super majority? And now we have a six. We only have six people who can vote and we need super majority. And so instead of the five, two, now we're down to five, one?
Well, I wasn't necessarily saying that they couldn't vote. I'm saying that that could be an argument that.
Ethically.
Not so much ethically, but it's, it's a judge on a panel that's hearing their own, hearing their own decision on appeal. So I don't think that the ethics law covers it necessarily, but, um, I could see an applicant making that argument or an opponent to an application making that argument. I think it does, it, it could complicate how those votes are counted, you know, do you? If, if it is something where somebody's asking for waiver of readings, then it changes your, your vote counts on that.
Mr. Moore? Before we do our straw poll, can I understand, if you guys don't mind, explaining the rationale behind this one?
Yeah, so from my recollection, um, this was kind of a, a way to bridge the communication between planning and zoning and council. That's the short of it. Am I characterizing it right? Yeah. It would just be, just kind of a liaison similar to, um, well, I guess a chair and it'd be a little bit more liaison, but similar to what we do with human services and all the other outfits.
I'll just add to that, and I brought this up in the committee, that a, a council member would bring a different perspective with the power of the voters behind them to those meetings. That's, and that's just something that I brought up in that as well.
I think that's, and I kind of think that's, so that perspective, I think, is spot on, that it, it does bring that perspective. My concern also is a little bit of what Mr. Boggs said, if you have one council member on there, is that council member representing all of council? Because there are often times, now, maybe less so currently, but there are times when there are wide range of opinions on topics on council.
I wouldn't say less so currently. I mean, I think we've gone through two major, I mean, two major developments recently and all seven of, seven of us have had different opinions on what something should look like.
We have, but it's respectful decision-making. Like we've respected each other and that's not always the case. And we have had some times when there's very, like dominant controlling.
But I guess, so, so think about all of the developments that we've had the last little bit here. What, what part of one council member being on there, do we think that would have had an impact?
I, I think it bridges an unneeded separation of like kind of responsibilities as far as the, um, the zoning commission needs to follow our codes, um, where us as council members follow the will of the people, which sometimes our codes doesn't count, account for the will of people, especially if our codes are 20 years outdated. So that's where I think conflating the two, bringing them together, uh, you know, I have my council glasses on and I go into the Planning and Zoning Commission and I have to vote that, or in the Planning and Zoning meeting and I have to vote that day. As a Planning and Zoning, uh, member, I have to put on different goggles than I would wear at a council meeting. And I think that makes it very difficult.
Well, you wouldn't have a vote technically.
Most times you're not voting.
Can I have a vote in those at times?
Yeah, but you can. You don't know. You could walk in there and.
You might have a vote, yeah.
Yeah, you don't know.
Are you asking me if you can ask Mr. Herr's opinion or are you gonna ask?
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking you, but I'd really like his opinion. May I ask your opinion?
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
What is, what is your thought?
You know what the question is. I'm being coy.
What is your thoughts on it?
I can tell you in the 14 years I've attended almost every planning and zoning commission here in the last 14 years, we haven't had a tie vote in 14 years that I've been here. Because we have seven members, we generally get pretty good attendance. Or if we don't have good attendance, they generally agree on most topics. We don't have a lot of split votes that take plate, take place in that commission. I think our communication is probably better now, or the opportunity to be aware of things is better now than it's ever been. We post all our agendas online. They're posted at least a week prior to the meeting, generally 10 days prior to the meeting. It gives everyone, including council, the full ability to review that. I think I've mentioned a number of times you can, how to sign up for those notices. We've again added an additional step where we email those agendas to you as well. So you have them in case you haven't gone on and got the notices. Um, I report in council generally what's going to be on planning and zoning's agenda. If it's anything that's a larger item, I'll put that in my written report, uh, the week prior to the meetings. So I think the communication's there. Um, in addition, I think it puts a lot of burden on council to attend those meetings. Sometimes those are lengthy meetings. You're already here a lengthy amount of times. You have a number of their boards and commissions that you're on. It just puts an additional burden on people to do that. And it really is going to provide very little value in an input perspective because you're not going to be voting on those items unless it's a rare, rare occurrence.
Straw poll?
Okay, who are you?
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No in putting it on the ballot?
No, in putting it on the ballot.
Yeah, I'm a no for the ballot.
I'm a no.
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 All right. So this item doesn't.
Thank you for answering the question and for your opinion.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you both, or all three.
Answering all the questions.
All right, now, now we do the circle back. Um, how do we want to approach the items for the residents? As we want to put them on the ballot. Um, Mr. Peoples, I know you have perspective on this, so I'd, I'd like to let you share your thoughts first.
Yeah, I, I think our approach is to try to make it as easy as possible. Ideally, one item. There's nothing on there that, that we can't live with, without, I should say. The, the bulk of those were non-substantial changes. The, the five we just went through. The, the salaries, of course, would, are the, are the two out there, the, the outliers of anything. And if nothing else, they stay the way they are. I mean, I guess, not, not speaking for the mayor, of course, but he kind of knows what his salary is for the next two years. And if it doesn't change, then, and the voters, uh, vote it down, then, you know, that's the will of the people.
Right.
Mr. Peoples, how much education are we allowed to give in advance that basically says that was an 11-member charter commission made up of residents of Canal Winchester? That was the first layer. The second layer was that there was significant council discussion. You can listen to it here.
Sure.
If you want to educate yourself on any of these items, the charter, can we post the red line version of the charter? So here's the current red line.
Yeah, it's basically posted now.
Yeah. So I think I'm okay lumping them all together if indeed we do some sort of an education campaign to give a little bit of the history of how we got here. Because, because this is something that only happens every five years, there are some people who didn't live here for five years who are going to be voting on this in November.
So Mr. Shea left, left him a voicemail message basically saying the same thing, asking the same question. So I talked to, uh, to Hannah earlier. I, I actually haven't had a chance to, uh, ask Ms. Jackson what we did last time. I mean, and it was, but putting out that campaign, there were, um, more, I don't know if there were any substantive changes last time either.
I'd love to see the mayor do a quick little tidbit on just the top four that we had down at the bottom.
Yeah, we can, we can put him on video or something.
Yeah, put him on video. You just, he doesn't want to be landing.
Hey, guys, I was really looking for this salary bump.
It seems weird. You could be pushing your car in because it's broken.
But I think you just do it like a sal, overall, but I think it'd be great to have your face out there doing some of that.
I think maybe that whoever the chairperson of the charter commission, this is their work. They should be given credit for doing their work and that they, you know, spent how many weeks doing this work and evaluating the pros and cons of each topic. That's just my opinion, Mrs. Amos, but I would like to see the charter commission get credit for doing their work.
If I may on that.
You don't want to be on video?
No, I mean, as, as long as, I would like, I don't want it to be about me. I want it to be about everybody. As long as the chart, the whole, the chart as a whole is willing to sign their name to it, I'm comfortable with that. They can be behind you on video. That'd be great. Okay.
How many can you do a topic?
Yeah.
So I think one of the important things to educate on isn't just the changes. It's the lack of some of the recommended changes that were coming out because I think part of the election from two years ago, part of the question from the public was evaluating the form of government. Right? And I think, I think what we also need to make sure we share is that the charter review commission has concluded. And the recommendation to council is that we continue with the strong mayor form of government. And based on that, here are some of the other recommendations that are, so I think it's, I think it's, we just need to make sure like we're closing the loop on the, because there were a lot of people that talked about, hey, what about council strong? Or city manager? Or, so we were getting a lot of those questions, I think, in that's, in that last cycle. And I think what we all said was, we're putting it to the charter review commission for them to bring forward a recommendation. And I think we need to make sure we, part of the communication back is just that work's done and the recommendation is this, aside from just the things that we're putting on the ballot. I don't want to shortchange the things we're putting on the ballot, but I think we need to make sure we talk about the things we're not putting on the ballot.
Yeah, what, what, uh, what limits should we put on there though? Because there were wards discussed, for example, for, for council. I mean, how, is that, is that the high level?
I think it's more form of government.
Okay.
It's exclusive.
Thank you.
And I think that's right. Like you say, because we are sticking with this, here's the salary adjustments that we're asking for. The rest of it, I think, is just status quo and you just get the reasons why.
Well, and I would also, this is, this is the city's constitution and this is the city's government. I'm not opposed to us, um, spending money and sending like a direct mail piece to every one of our households in the city so that we can make sure that this information is getting out to people, like a multi-pronged attack. I mean, videos, you're.
I was kidding about the videos, but.
I think it's a great idea. The videos, um, you know, the, uh, a direct mail, like the water bill insert. Like we've got several opportunities to educate the public, but I think we all in this room need to find, agree on a way to educate our, our residents, what we're doing and why, especially when it comes to this charter. And really get that information out there. And I'm, all I'm saying is I think we should look at, if they don't have it in the budget, maybe spending, you know, 10 grand, do a direct mail piece to all of our residents to share what's going on.
What to contact, what it takes.
I will say the only thing that I don't like about that idea is the fact that we're going to be mailing it out during election season. And you're already bombarded with a whole bunch of election stuff and people are just going. So I don't know if we're just burning $10,000 to mail stuff out.
That, that's my only concern with spending such a bunch of money to mail out.
Yeah, but somebody that's.
Good, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, somebody that's interested in educating themselves is gonna read it, just like they probably read all the mailers they're getting for all the officials that they're going to be voting on in November. So, I hear what you're saying, but.
And they'll throw those away, too.
Yes, they'll recycle, they will recycle them.
I'm an optimist, okay? Everyone read mine.
I mean, I firmly agree with the contact and what it takes to get somebody to actually pay attention or read. Videos are great because they are very short and will segment it. This is the, this is what's going to change. And then the next video is, this is what's going to change. Because then people will pay attention. You've got 10 seconds.
But not everybody's on Facebook. Not everybody's on Instagram.
True. They can throw them on your website. Throw them on.
We can host them on the website.
Yeah, I think there's options to do it.
A lot cheaper doing social media than I.
But I think there's options. I think, Destiny, maybe.
That doesn't have to be decided today.
Put it down there on their app for us.
Maybe we could.
Maybe we could use tourism when you do it.
I like that.
If I may add one more thing, and I want this to be your, I'm sorry to jump in, but.
Welcome back.
No, just in, as far as the discussion goes, it's like, do you lump it together or keep it separate? I wanted to add a different perspective to what Mr. Peoples was saying. If I remember correctly, and forgive me for not knowing specifically, but there was a minor item in the red line that kind of cleaned things up legally for us, and there might be another one or two. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's kind of what I'm remembering. So, if, maybe you split it up into two separate ones, and you've got the two big rocks as the salaries, and then you get all the minor ones in one. That way, you clean up all the grammatical and the legal stuff that needs to be taken care of. That's just my personal suggestion.
So, you're thinking 34 items get wrapped into one, and then the other four or five items?
Well, not even four or five. I mean, I think Mr. Peoples was saying that it's really just the two regarding the salaries.
Council and mayor.
Yeah, and it's all your decision. I've just made that.
I, I'll just let Hannah kind of ponder through it, too, because she always comes up with some pretty good ways to get it out there for us.
When do we have to decide?
Well, we already decided what's going to the ballot.
You have second reading next Monday, third reading at the first meeting in August, and it'll be sent to the.
Board.
Board of Elections.
So, real quick, it sounds like nobody wants to separate anything on the charter, right?
Well, that was what Chuck was just bringing up.
Yeah, that's the question at hand.
But we don't have to make that decision today. That's something that we can discuss on the second, third reading, correct?
Yeah, we'll make sure. I didn't think there was anything legal other than the village wording, but I thought that was more of a cleanup as well because I think at one point we have something that says village is city, city is village. Because we still, yeah.
Yeah, because that's, that was my question at the last council meeting with Mr. Boggs. It was that, because there are some of our official documents that still say village, and I wanted to make sure somewhere there's something that ties us together so that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah, as I, there was, all of the cleanup things are truly cleanup things, in my opinion. And we've lived without them so far. So, I, I think that keeping it as a single ballot issue is probably, you know, that would be my opinion. It's the easiest to message. It's the easiest for the voter. But we'll, we'll have that lined up for you.
When, when, Mr. Melkin, when you were saying that, I thought you meant, like, one of our advertisement pictures could be of the simple stuff, and then the, like, more in-depth stuff could just be a 10-second backdrop. I apologize. That was.
Bad listening.
Bad listening.
Okay, quick straw poll. It's not like straw polls apparently now. If there are no legal reasons why we would need to separate salary from other items, how do we feel about this going on the ballot as one measure?
I'm fine with it.
Take out your microphone.
I'm a yes. It goes on as one.
Yeah.
Oh, can I ask it?
No, I don't like it going all on as one because I think, kind of what to what Chuck said is, you're lumping too much together, and salaries is a hot button topic, and it's going to discredit a lot of the other stuff that's important.
Can I ask a question?
Is that what you said, Chuck? Sorry.
When, when the ballot's written out, who, are you the one crafting the language of that?
In consultation with the Board of Elections, really, really, we will submit it to them. They'll send ballot language back and, you know, for something where it's.
So, so we would just want to make sure we're not burying the, what we've considered the, the higher significance. Like, we would want those up towards the top of the ballot because I know that's a, there's going to be a lot of words on that.
I think they'll have to come in order, though, of the charter.
Yeah, I mean, it would be to amend the City of Canal Winchester city charter as set forth and.
So, it won't have every poll.
Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily have it all pulled out and highlighted.
I just feel like sometimes when I've read those issue one or issue two, there's, I mean, there's like a page and a page and page.
Yeah, the, the state issue language and the way that they're put on the ballot is just a different procedure. Because they have, they have ballot board and, you know, or is it fairly describing? Is it not fairly describing?
Okay, so from what I heard, Mr. McLaughlin would prefer there to be two, two measures.
Of the higher significance.
Kind of back and forth.
Yeah. I don't know that I've picked a lane yet either. I think all along I was kind of curious about. Again, I, I think no matter, at this point, I almost think that we're the only significant, not to take away from the word, the most significant things in the charter will be the salad. And so, I think whether or not you're voting on it or not, I think that's what you're voting on ultimately.
Right, because I'm not going to.
To Matt's point. That's Matt's point. I just picked up Matt's.
Point of clarification from Mr. Boggs. When does the number of ballot issues have to be determined? Council's going to pass the changes, of course, and how it gets on the ballot is, how many is on the ballot is.
Right.
How is that determined?
Yeah, that would be determined as part of the resolution referring it to the ballot. So, it could be that third reading would be when you need to make a decision.
So, Mr. Boggs, at our next meeting, would you be able to share with council whether or not there are any legal elements of this? And why would we want to make sure that certain things get adopted or not?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, yeah. So, never mind, you know, I don't know. Do I need to keep arguing? Do we decide?
Or until next, anyways. This is, this is our report session or council.
Well, I just talking it out, thinking about it. So, basically, it's a $2,000 raise per person, give or take. It's $14,000, $30,000 raise for him. Give or take, we're talking $45,000 total. I mean, we have a $16 million budget. I get our salaries are important, but it's, I don't think it's worth breaking out into multiple things over less than, you know, I mean, a minuscule amount of the budget.
Oh, I see it with Jackson's face. Just, just.
Okay, I need the meeting.
Must be like a.
Ms. Jackson, please feel free to tell me if I'm wrong.
Fiscal person's face, yeah. I see that face. I mean, that was just a quick laugh, but. Yeah, that, I mean, I, again, I think, without the planning and zoning portion of this, I think the salaries become the two issues that, that we're really taking to residents to ask for their approval on. And if they don't, well, then we set them anyway. We will be, and again, I don't know if the will of council will be too. It sounds like we already want to change the mayor's salary anyway. So, that'll be changing probably no matter what. And whether or not they decide that they like the range that we've given or the index we've provided.
I think that the whole reason that we've talked about the council salary is to get us out of the, give me money kind of, we don't want. I think most of us would appreciate those rates that we haven't had for, since 2007 or whatever. It's just none of us kind of just ask for it, right? And so, this is our way and the, the way of future councils to not have to ask specifically for an increase.
Okay. It sounds like we've made it through all of the items. We haven't officially, I mean, a quick straw poll again. It sounds like most of us are in favor of one issue on the ballot. But again, I think, based on Mr. Boggs's advice on whether or not there are any reasons why we need to make sure certain elements pass, we may still be looking into. So, we'll conclude that at our next council meeting. It sounds like so we've made it through all the items. I think we're, does Mr. Boggs and staff, do we feel like we're, we've achieved our goal for this evening?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I want to say thank you to not, again, to the Charter Commission, to the city staff and the work that you've put into it. Mr. Boggs, thank you for your guidance and oversight. It's been, it's been a really good experience for me, not having been through this process before. So, thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today.
Yeah.
And speaking, even if you didn't expect it.
Appreciate your participation.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Shea to adjourn, second by Ms. Amos. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.